Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education in hearing for the transfer of funds, Monday, June 13th, 2016. We will call Ms. Torino.
Okay, Simmons?
Present.
Oda?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Marks?
Present.
Forth?
Here.
Huckabee?
Here.
Great.
Here, and the former is present. First up the agenda, we open the floor to a public hearing regarding the transfer of funds to the education and operation in the Mink's Fund. Dr. Duster?
Thank you. Ms. LaBella, could you please go through the hearing process with us?
We will call over. Okay, Carol?
See.
Here, oh. Oh, here, alright. Forth, here. Huckabee?
Here.
Oda?
Here.
Simmons?
Present.
Marks, present. Parades.
Here, and the former is present. Ms. LaBella?
This transfer is, we talked about it with the budget process completed last year, and we're doing it now this year. The monthly's budgeting transportation, because we get very simple to edit and come up and add information, but you got a whole budget that we put into transportation, and now the new we get to, and we get all the admin information. It was just the legislature or the law, and now you just need to act to do the transfer, so you take any comments or questions from the audience, and you just go to the parent, and then you'll just have to come back. Question? Kind of, you call them a statute well for a lot of people, just say.
Are there any discussion questions? Are there any public comments? I will entertain a motion to adjourn your public hearing. Mrs. Harold's first. And this is Oda, is second?
Oh, Miss Huckabee.
Okay. The public hearing is adjourned. We'll now move on to our next.
Forth? Yes. Oda?
Yeah.
Carol?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Parades.
Yes, the motion is passed. We'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Next, we have recognition of students. Dr. Duster?
Yes, thank you very much. We have a lot of students here, we have parents, and I want to let the students know, we'd like to get your picture after you have completed coming up here. We'll announce your name, and we'll have some discussion about you, and tomorrow we'll post your picture on our website as well. Parents, want to thank you very much for all of your support. You know, this is June, and school is out, but thank you for being here, and we're so proud of our students for everything that they've done. Very successful this year. With that being said, I will ask Ms. Mulholland to please come up first, and then Mr. Deminsky, if you'll come up for the athletes when she has finished as well as the national history review.
Ms. Deminsky?
Yes.
Alright, I'm representing Math Bowl this evening. Math Bowl is a yearly thing done here, well, done in the district. It's done in the district, it's sponsored by Prairie Hills District 144. There's 27 school districts that are represented from out the South suburbs, so we're very pleased to announce that we send students, we send about 16 students, two per grade, starting in grade one all the way through grade eight. There are two students selected, and then there's one alternate selected in case something happens to one of our regular kids. There is a competition held every year, and it's done, it's a little test we take, and we take the top two students for every grade, and we send those guys on. We were very fortunate to have lots of children have awards this year, so I know that there's many in the audience, we had some, we had third and fourth place winner from grades two, we had a sixth place winner from grade five, grade six had a fourth grade, or a fourth place winner, I'm sorry, grade seven had a second place winner, and then Division C, which is our grades seven and five and six, came in first place. So there's four divisions throughout the Math Bowl competition. Grades one and two are Division A, grades three and four are Division B, five and six is C, and seven and eighth is D. So we were very pleased to announce the district of 161 in first place winner this year.
Do you want to read their names, and they can come up? We'll start with Ms. Marks.
Okay. We have from first grade, I'm sorry about the, if I mess up your name. Is it Satya Fina?
Yeah.
Okay, come on, get your report. I'm not sure if the other ones are here, Maddie McGatey, or Bennett Matthews? No, okay. Division A for second grade, Gregory Mitchell from Western Avenue, Cormac Saunders, and I'm sorry about this name, if I mess it up, is it Duwee from?
That one.
That one? Okay, nobody from second grade? Third grade, we have your own work, Miss Sonia, and and Gianni. Also from Division B, fourth grade, we had Jaquan Ratliff, Ivy Kidd, and Emily Thompson. From Division C, fifth grade, we have Liam Nelson, Amy Chauvin, and Phil Alman. From Division C, sixth grade, we had Keesha Toga, Haley Walker, and Thomas Sando McCann. And from Division D, which is our seventh and eighth graders, we have Jack Williams, Hayden Harris, Sierra Carpenter, Jasmine Toca, and Alright, so we just want to thank the board for sponsoring us every year, it's a great event, it's at State hosted. You know, there's a few things to get into it, so, and we, again, it's so exciting for the kids to have something academic to, you know, we kind of, to move on. Thank you.
Ms. Mulholland? We can have the team out there take a picture. I know Mr. Deminsky usually takes our pictures, however, he has to introduce, so if we get somebody to take a picture for him. And in addition, we'll get a picture of the first place team again, I think we both had already, but one more if you need. Alright, Mr. Deminsky? Let's start out with the track participants. And our track people come up, go start on this side, and go around this board, we don't like giving them certificates. There's a lot.
Thank you, Dr. Duster, and Morgan. Again, it's my pleasure, it seems like I've been up here every month, it's been a great privilege, each and every time, to introduce and recognize one of our athletic or extracurricular corps, Parker, it's been a banner year, both on Golden, on May the 21st, I believe, we took about 30 students down for the state track meet, it was a combination of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. We have many that participated, we have several that placed. I'd like to actually recognize the athletes that are here tonight and place first, give them some individual and team recognition, and I will call all the names of the athletes that the coaches gave me, and we'll have you guys come up. Our seventh grade girls in the four by one, that's four by 100, right, they came in second for the entire state in their group. And that was Julian Arnold, Leah Williams-McGee, Anaya Askew, and Jasmine Hunter. Are any of them? Jasmine Hunter also came in third, the entire state, in seventh grade hurdles, had the privilege of watching her run at her beach, she was blowing away, finished third in the entire, in the entire state for the beach. And Adria Smith, are you here, Adria? Come on up, Adria. Adria finished eighth overall in the eighth grade shot put, again, in the entire state. She's going to stay up here. I'm going to read the names, these are the names the forecourt just gave me, if you're here, just come right on up, and we will do a round around the table, and we'll take a picture of you as well. And Anaya Askew, Waylon Allen, Julian Arnold, Maya Brown, Jaron Burns, Justin Burns, Caitlin Cole, Reginald Jafon Dudley, Mia Dyson, Annie Fields, Leah Foley, Xavier Fraser, Aria Harrell, Maya Harrell, Taylor Harvey, Jasmine Hunter, Alexis Mackey, Caitlin McCall, Kennedy McHenry, Karen O'Parra, Hayden Wright, Brooke Scullard, Jason Schmidt, Adria Smith, Alexis Strinkel, Stacy Tarrant, Armani Warner, Jayable Watkins, Jake Whitver, and Leah Williams-McGee. If our young ladies and our decan, gentlemen, if you're a young lady? Yeah, we're young. If there's one, go on out to the lobby, and one gentleman, a picture's out there, and we'll get that on the website. Thank you, and one more round of applause. Alright, last, but not least. Last, but certainly not least, we also recognize three students in the district, two at Parker, one at Serena Hills.
One at Serena Hills? Three at Parker?
Three at Parker. That participated in both regional competitions, as well as national competitions, both the history meet and the geography meet. That is a, that's an event that there are different stages, and it culminated in the National Mentorship Place in Chicago last weekend. So the three students, and one of them is out of the country and not here, but just want to give him a round of applause. David Pebeck, in sixth grade, he participated in the National Geography Championship, as well as the History Meet. We can give David a round of applause. And then there are two students that are here, and they're here with their families. Isaiah Zelman, you want to come on up? Let's give him a round of applause. Isaiah, you participated in the National History Meet, that's correct, make sure I get that right. And then we have Bobby Sternin, come on up, Bobby. Bobby also participated in the National History Meet, he also participated in the National Geography Championship, and I do have his stats, Bobby finished 56th out of 165 in the geography competition, he finished in the top 20 percent in the National History Meet, so round of applause. Just get a picture of them, and get a picture of them, we go, thank you, everybody, alright.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, on the agenda, we have audience comments, and at this time, there are no audience comments requested, so we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, item of the superintendent's report. Dr. Duster?
Thank you very much. I have five items here. Number one is the dashboard, we're staying stable as we move ahead, as far as, excuse me, as we close the year, we have registrations taking place, and it's starting to flow in with some learning students, we'll know, we'll have a little grasp on the number of students by about the third or eighth of August. It's empty years, the dashboard, and we've accomplished our goal with that. The second thing, are the building report outs? As the board knows, every trimester or so, I have a report out from all the buildings, and there's significant success in every one of our buildings, as far as our math scores, our culture and climate that they address, et cetera. And I will send, I'll send that report home in my Friday update for us again. So, very incredible, our principals should be celebrating, there are two schools that a majority of the grade levels were in the 70th percent class in math, I've never seen that before, phenomenal, so, they did a great job. Next, summer school, that will begin next Monday, we will start that, and that will be at Parker Junior High this year. Number four, strategic plan report out, that will be on Wednesday. I posted that as a board meeting, because the majority of our forecourt members will be there, we have about 41 people so far that have our SVP, hopefully we'll have more, if you remember, we have about 65, 70 people that run there, I know June's a tough time for people to come, but we will be giving a share out of kind of what we've done, remember the strategic plan this year with a lot of planning, except for this year, and how we're going to assess it. So, that'll take place, that'll be at Parker Junior High, and we have not confirmed an exact room, and we think it's going to be at the media center, or at the media center, we'll break up sessions in a couple of classrooms. And Mr. Ryan, you are invited to that as well, and your interns, I don't know if you came last year, but you are invited, you see the information. Along with that, I will post, we have a PowerPoint presentation, I'll post that on the website when this, when this is completed. So, the last thing that I have is the tri-conference, and this is an annual thing that I do, by July 1st, I would like information from the Board of Education, so that we can get the best accommodations possible. There's three things that I need, the tri-conference is November 18th through the 20th, and on June 30th, actually, the registration for the conference starts, so, I think I want everything by June 25th, if I'm looking at that correctly. And the three items that I need is already committed to attend the conference and need to be registered, you'll get ahold of me, as well as Kathy, we can get that done. And then, how many nights of lodging, is it Friday night, Saturday night, both or none? We'll need to know that. And then, number three, are you attending the Friday evening, the location to be determined? So, if you could get back to us on that by June 45th, that would be great, because we are going to make early reservations. Okay?
Questions? I thought the board, that we had discussed reviewing the lodging needs for that conference, since it's downtown, we should probably have that discussion before, if those problems were necessary, for those people to attend, at the expense of those hotels.
When would we have to, we can put that on the next count, if anyone's interested. When would we, what was the date that we'd be making those arrangements? If you found that by July 1st, would that be July 2nd?
It would be early next week, but that's around, was it 4th, or some Monday?
Okay, I think that we certainly could have this discussion at the June count, and have some direction about where we wanted to go with this.
Do they have prices for what that would cost? Some insignificant expenditure.
Do they have prices for that? Oh, I know they do, but do they give us, I don't remember seeing the prices.
Uh, yeah, we're going to be at the live exchange.
Any other information that we need to bring?
So, you know, um
Prices for lunch?
Okay.
Until July?
Yeah. We would have to look at it at
In this, in this June count? It's another, you know, coming out.
Well, that's in 2017. Then, yeah, we're supposed to have it in 2017. Then, I think the 11th, is the July until
11th is the regular.
What is the benefit of registering early, as opposed to
If you get a capital settlement.
What time last year did we do this?
Can't even remember.
Don't say time.
Yeah. Alright, I think we'll have clarity, certainly made probably four weeks ago. Or, sorry, missed count. If there's, if there's no further questions, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is the approval of consent. Agenda items listed below, and there are three, four listed, the regular meeting, the regular meeting of the Board of Education, the minutes for reunite, executive session, reunite, the committee of the whole meeting, May 23rd, executive session, May 23rd, we have approval of any reviews for the Urban Association of School Boards, we have a gift, first, which we should make recognition of, as well as some player reviews. So I will make entertain a motion to, to approve the consent agenda items below, as listed. So moved, this is Marks, second, this is Harold. Is this, you're presenting, we have a recognition from the gift, from Mr. Deminsky?
Yeah.
We sent him a letter to
Would you be able to describe it, or?
What he did is he ended up paying for some additional dollars at the state track, he does this every year, whatever the needs are, it could be pizza, or it could be scums, or something of that nature, but I think this year, there was some food that he purchased, he does that every year for us, so, we appreciate it.
It's an ongoing gesture of a very generous
It is a lot for us, that athletes that go down to state and, it is under that, so I'm making a future agenda, and then just looking at, as we bring down students, they incur costs, safety, which they're representing the school, that maybe we should look at, because you have kids that qualify, not offer every unit, but for those who go down to state for different things, but the answer may still be no, but I think it's worth looking at, just covering the costs, because the kids end up having trouble with some hotel and bus, and
They don't cover
Yeah, I think it's just a hotel, maybe, I'm not sure, but it's just worth looking at, because they're representing the school.
And we pay for the hotel, and the bus.
They do, they have, they have to cover something, so the answer, yeah, maybe that is why they should still have to cover something, the legal issues that our kids tend to pay for their math.
Yeah, what do they cover?
That would be, they're paying for the hotel, paying for food, and whatever else.
Children pay for something, so I don't know what it is, in fact, but parents have to cover costs, the parents have to come in, kids put down state, your cars now, so I know that they're coming, there's something to rest, technically, I have to make sure that they're fully accounted.
It's worth reviewing.
Yeah, it's, it's a small amount, but it is, you know, maybe significant to some families, and we all learn, we pack kids coming down to state to represent our school.
I don't know what that would be, you, because we pay for, well, we can
Okay. Alright, so, we have a, there's no further discussion, questions? We will roll call Ms. Torino.
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Oda?
Yeah.
Marks?
Yes.
Forth?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Parades.
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have information action items, first, getting approval of budget amendments for the Normandy construction. Dr. Duster, come on.
Um, yes, this was brought to us at the county meeting, it's just our construction, as far as many of the dollar amounts, so that we could have it in this fiscal year, since we don't want to get paid in fiscal. Any questions?
Okay, well, I will entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment in the capital project fund to add expenditure lines for the asbestos abatement and pipe replacement in Normandy Villa, in the amount of $250,000. Mrs. Forth is first?
Second.
This is Harold, second. Any discussion questions? Can we roll call Ms. Torino?
Okay, Marks?
Yes.
Oda?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Forth?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Parades.
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of bills, this month, the bills were scrutinized and reviewed by Mrs. Huckabee, who's with us by phone.
She can make motions, she can vote, she just can't make a quorum.
That's right. So, Mrs. Huckabee?
I reviewed the bills for the month of June, looking at the bills, I thought that they were in order, and I recommend that we make a motion to pay the bills for the month of June, off of the dollar amount of $1,242,379, the 11th.
Okay, so moved?
Second.
Second. Do we have any discussion, questions?
I do have one question, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to do anything to plan on this, I was just out of curiosity, it may be very initial to some, but I was just curious, we had three alarm in one day at three different schools, and I was just curious about that, one of them was for $100, the other one was for, and the other two were for $50. I was just curious, because it's kind of, I mean, is that kind of unusual to have alarms going off in three different, off alarm on the same day? Is that usual, or am I missing something, and is it usual for them to be different in terms of, or in terms of environment?
Yeah, just so the board knows that there is a, there is a charge that, but we had to do a construction work, there's two alarms that went off here, actually, and it was because of the dust, and we had to deal with that, and then one was at the junior high, and that one was due to dust as well, and so it, it's, it gives the resemblance of smoke, and it sets those alarms off at that time.
And if I see difference, that, that, that's normal, correct?
Well, which, yeah, it's, well, it doesn't happen often, but that is why it happened, and I don't know if it's normal, I mean, it's a normal reaction to those.
Chicago Heights villages.
But
Yeah, Chicago Heights versus Flotsam.
Right.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Oh, for the, I didn't hear, it's for the bill, oh, yeah, the charges are different because of the two different villages, yes.
Okay, that makes sense, okay, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, sorry to hear.
Okay, are there any further discussion or questions?
You said that the alarm went off at Parker because of the dust as well?
Yeah, it's
Is there construction still happening?
They were cleaning out the ventilation, and it came up in the mersons.
That's good. Good, right. Okay, we will call Ms. Torino.
Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Oda?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Forth?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
And parades.
Yes, the motion is passed. Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of payroll. I will entertain a motion to approve payroll, amount of one million, three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, and eighty-six dollars, and fifty-nine cents for the month of May, as presented. Mrs. Harold?
Second.
Mrs. Horr? Any discussion, questions? Can we roll call Mrs. Prino?
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Horr?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Parais.
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of concussion oversight team. I will entertain a motion to approve the concussion oversight team as presented. Mrs. Harold? And, Mrs. Huckabee, where is that you? Who said so moved?
Yes.
And Mrs. Huckabee, second. Any discussion questions? Can we roll call Mrs. Prino?
Okay, Horr?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Parais.
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of dates for discounted student fees.
I'm sorry, um, Kathy, you're filling out the concussion oversights. I'll, okay, let me check. Thank you.
Uh, again, next on the agenda is the approval of the dates for discounted student fees. I will call for a motion to allow for the students' fees to be discounted through July twenty eighth, twenty sixteen, for returning students and incoming kindergarten students, and for new students on August fourth and August fifteenth, new student registration days. Mrs. Harold?
Okay.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Horr?
I have one. Thank you.
Mrs. Huckabee, where are you? Do we have any discussion questions?
I don't know, one question, um, I'm, if you could remind me, what exactly is the discount in?
What is the brand exactly? It's twenty dollar difference?
Yeah, I got it, right.
About a twenty dollar difference, Mrs. Huckabee, you have to check for sure, I'm thinking twenty dollars. So if they register, um, you know, up to that point, or plus, and twenty dollars less.
Okay, thank you, was it this last year?
No, it's the same.
It's the same as last year, yes.
President, thank you, then, okay, I was hoping the money being this night, but the discount, I thought it was a little more, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any further questions or discussion? Mrs. Prino, can we roll call?
Okay, Odom?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Horr?
Yes.
Parais.
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of student catastrophic insurance. I will entertain a motion to approve adding student catastrophic insurance onto the student insurance package purchased through ISIC, effective August first, twenty sixteen, at a cost of three thousand and sixty-five dollars.
Okay.
Mrs. Huckabee? Second, Mrs. Horr? Are there any discussion questions? Okay, with that, Mrs. Prino, can we roll call?
Okay, Marks?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Horr?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Parais.
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of fidelity investment at a four oh three B plan investment provider. I will entertain a motion to approve allowing fidelity investments, being approved four oh three investment provider across from District one sixty-one's four oh three B plan, provided that at a minimum of ten employees enter into a salary reduction agreement with fidelity and the district. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Horr? And Mrs. Harold, the second. Is there any questions or discussion?
Yes, I have a question. If that should drop, there's, that, we're, um, the charge, uh, is there a difference in charge? Does it drop beyond the ten?
There is no charge, um, it's just that we don't like to add a lot of investment advisors, because it makes a real problem for payroll, so we require a minimum of ten, if we drop below ten, or it's already on the board, we'll keep it open, but we require ten to just start it up.
All right, thank you.
Are there any further discussion, questions? Okay, with that, um, can we have a roll call, Mrs. Prino?
Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Horr?
Yes.
Parais.
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen tentative budget.
Prine, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, again, this is about the tentative that you're going to get. Uh, we have no federal allocation from the state, we have no state allocation from the state. We just got the tax levy right after the committee of the whole, so at least I have loving numbers to start working with now. So we held revenues flat going forward. We put two percent on salary raise, and benefits as a placeholder, did a little bit of movement within the, uh, non cap equipment for the Chrome book purchase, and, uh, made some, the change to the loan interest, that I know. And the rest of it, we're working with. At this point, what they gave me was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the red, but again, there's no money, money changes in revenue at this point. We're going to try and get you everything that we can in July, we're hoping that we'll get some more information. Uh, by then, I'm, the federal allocations will be, and we'll be able to take care of the local side, where you got state piece, and that'd be a big old question mark for a long time, and it's any great luck, we'll have settlement sometime soon that we can start doing the salary benefits first, so, so this is about the tentative that we're going to get. But we need to start paying people July one, too, so kind of take this as a step, a step towards going forward. And we, we're not escaping, we passed that.
Uh, Frank, the, the construction of Normandy Villa is out of those numbers.
That's correct, this is actually a good construction.
Any further, uh, I'm sorry, um... I will entertain a motion to adopt the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty seventeen, at, at today, June thirteenth, twenty sixteen, Board Education Duty. Um, do I have, Mrs. Horr? And Mrs. Harold, the second. Uh, are there any discussion questions?
I just have one, uh, just want to make sure, because I hear Lavelle all the way, but, oh, if, the budget, if we don't approve a budget, we'll kind of like, they really love, won't be able to pay people, is, is that what it is, if we don't approve a tentative budget?
That is not technically correct, um, there are plenty of districts in the state of Illinois that don't actually adopt the tentative budget until August, and then they adopt their real one in September. I'm kind of a more accounting purist, that says you really ought to have something approved by your governing board that allows you to start spending July one, so this is kind of one of my little peculiarities, and I'd just like the board to say, yes, you can continue to spend money.
And we've, in just past history, we've done this for many years in the school district as well, so it's just a common practice viewing.
Yeah, I, I just asked the question, because it's just my knowledge here, that, uh, we just wanted clarification on that.
Okay, are there any further, thank you, Mrs. Huckabee, are there any further, um, discussion or questions? With that, uh, Mrs. Prino, can we roll call?
Okay, Huckabee?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Simmons? Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Horr?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Parais.
Yes, the motion is passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of technology devices. And we'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve a three-year device replacement cycle to continue with the district's one-on-one, one-to-one program. The lease will be for one thousand Chromebook devices, including a three-year warranty, a Google management software. The lease will be for two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-one cents, with three year payments of seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars and seventeen cents for each year, fiscal year, seventeen fiscal year, eighteen fiscal year.
Sure, this is a little different than what was brought to you, um, Miss Lavelle had measured out buying them outright, as well as a lease. And with technology, we believe that lease is a better way to go, plus we're saving a little bit of money, so...
It actually ends up being about three thousand dollars less to a lease if we're creating annual payments, as it would be to just out now purchase it. Additionally, we're looking at really the life cycle for what we're doing for really being three years. At that point in time, this company will take the devices off our hand, they're giving it to us less, because they're, they're anticipating that there's a salvage value, and they'll be able to sell on secondary market afterwards. Kind of frees us up of having to, to do some of that as well, which is kind of a nightmare to you for all of the classes.
The question I got just from that, one of the strategies that we use, which I appreciate that you brought forward before, is that the devices now that come out, we're using them for our younger students, so if we don't own them, we can't pass it to the younger students. And so what will that leave us with? Because obviously, because iPads are so out of date by that time, can't use it off school.
At this point, what we're taking a look at then, is that the three-year cycle starts to end, and where we're looking at doing the full two hundred, call it two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, every year in three-year cycles, what we'll end up doing is, starting with this year, so you get the seventy-nine thousand, and next year it'll double, because we'll bring to you the replacement for the next three grades.
With the board.
And then, yeah, so that you'll end up still eventually, in the third year of this, you'll end up with that quarter of a million dollar expenditure still on an annual basis, but it'll get new devices that everyone has opposed to having to have in older places.
Okay, so that they only send the ones, and then they kind of all write, all off, and that we can... Okay, so they'll have the same type of devices?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this way, we'll keep, um, current, with current data, current, uh, technology, as opposed to marrying into something that's, that's...
Exactly, and, and that way, we're not, you know, the, the younger grades will end up with newer devices, too, instead of, you know, three-year old things that we're trying to put together, because they're used a lot as well as when they're older.
One last question, which I probably should have asked before, if I think, uh, earlier in the night. Um, are teachers and our equipment that we're using, at least we're using, um, Mac computers and a lot of Mac, right? I'm sorry.
Both of them.
Oh, sorry, so is there any question, or, um, any concern about compatibility, when teachers do something on the Mac, and get, get...
What they're putting a lot of, at this point, is in Google Docs.
So, so you're using the Google platform?
So the platform is supported by...
Is there, at any time, should we prepare for thinking about whether or not moving, move our administration and our teachers to a different platform, that we may be looking at on Google-based products as opposed to Mac, are we pretty satisfied with that?
Everyone's using, we'll break down to either of the devices. So I'm probably one of the very, in my office, pretty much the only ones working in a Windows environment anymore, because my computer's software does not play well with Mac. So my complete office is on there, but we're also in the Google environment as well. It's a, it's, it's cloud-based, and you can do it on either device. So it's actually, it's kind of a nice platform that we can go across, just sort of, uh...
Okay.
A little more specifically, though, there may be some transitions that we'll have to find, if it's an app that's counting on a different app with the Chrome and with the Apple, there will be some differences that we'll address.
Like for, for classes, packs for classes?
Could be apps for classes, right, so like GarageBand, that's an Apple product, right? So we'd have to find something compatible on the Chrome.
Understand my, and you have, if they're under expensive, that might...
Given, given that, that we knew that that might be a take upon the desk, and we, one, one, we did ask the teachers how big of a nightmare they thought that might be, moving from one device to another, overwhelming, they said they do not believe this, so I'm, we're an issue for them.
Is that a nightmare, so this, by the time it costs, is that what...
No, and, and most of these apps are, they're comparable.
Okay.
So, in your conversation with the teachers, was it mostly, um, the, the arts teachers who were interested in the iPads for GarageBand?
Yeah, we, we need to talk to some of the specialist teachers, because what we've talked to them about, what have been, you know, with some of these iPads now, meaning, you know, all the junior high iPads, we move that, we'd be putting potentially classrooms of the iPads in the hardware, see if they can form a backup device, so we'll, we'll do that.
Okay.
The only thing with that, that's going to be a little bit of an issue, because they have so many kids that are seen, and those IDs, a lot to fear on.
Yeah, we're going to have to work on this.
Because that's going to be an issue.
Right now, it's a bigger issue of having elementary, and they still all have iPads, this is only the junior highs, so we still have some time to figure out.
Okay.
Which grades will get the new six, seven?
I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Odom.
My question is, um, this particular company that we have the lease, um, contract from, that we give other offers or bids on pricing for different companies?
Honestly, I did not go to hopeful leasing companies, um, we drilled down, we faced quotes with three or four different companies, and got them down as far as possible, um, their lease idea kind of came at the last minute. So this was a company that we had used in the past, and has gotten us the best price for copiers and so on, so we have, had good experience with them, and it was kind of one of those, they said, hey, I wonder what would happen if, and this is the one that we did have. If we wanted to, we could absolutely wait a couple of weeks, I can throw it out there, but I, historically speaking, this guy's pretty much, he's done both for us in the past, so...
I think we need to get an order.
We have to get an order, we definitely have to.
Just, I, I mean, this, I'm just one person, I just have a, um, I always feel leery about continuing to maintain business with the same company over and over again, and how that moves to our constituents. So if we get a couple more offers, or a couple more estimates, I don't think it would hurt, um, but that's my particular opinion, and...
Even how low, uh, I, I've got to say, I don't believe that you're going to be looking at a variance of more than maybe a thousand dollars with any companies that we go to. Uh, that's kind of been the range of other districts I was hoping to, said, yeah, when it came to, it was insane, it came in a real narrow margin. And so a lot of them ended up going, companies that they were comfortable with, ended up just going to pass.
Oh, I, I, I trust your, I trust your judgment as far as the, the choice of vendors, I'm just saying, for purposes of we're doing business the way, you know, where we do business of getting estimates, at least three estimates, and then going with that, and then we have some kind of record for our constituents, who then have questions about our repeated use of the same vendor over and over again, especially in a community like ours, where there's loads of people who have different businesses, and things that we're feeding contracts to certain people.
The majority of our time is really spent driving down the actual, where we were purchasing the computers from, and we spent a lot of time going back and counting them down, 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 and that's a lot, a lot of time, it's like, it's a lot of time to go back and concentrate, it's got to go to some price on lease, so at least we just, we didn't have time.
Can you, want to clarify, as to, you know, computers and iPad are like cars, and when you take them out, you, something, you know, the mouse, you click it, as well as, I know we're leasing, and we're not buying, but at the same time, um, I... but at the same time, how long are we projecting the these iPad, I'm sorry, are going to last? I mean, considering the amount of money that we're paying, it's not like they're going to update them each year. I'm guessing that's not what I'm hearing from?
About three years. We're looking at a three-year replacement.
The amount of money.
We're looking at a three-year replacement.
Sorry?
We're looking at a three-year replacement cycle.
Well, they will replace them in three years, three or three?
Oh, no. They would take them off our hands and then we would, we would purchase again.
Well, do you like a twenty years back?
Well, we're leasing, it's kind of like leasing a car, where we have it for three years. Pay this amount, we get it for three years, after we pay that. After three years, they then take them back, because they're no longer paying them. And then we start a whole new lease cycle theoretically, with either the same company or a different company.
All over again.
All over again.
Not unlike what we do with the bustle.
Right. Yeah, it's kind of like, it's, yeah. So, and in this way, every three years, we don't have to go through the process of trying to find a new home for the obsolete devices and then going out and buying new ones. This way, you're basically at the service that brings you new devices and removes the obsolete ones off your hands.
There could be something better in three years.
Yeah, in three years, who knows? I mean, three years.
And the prices keep dropping.
More.
Right, yeah. I didn't mean to cut you off. And just to clarify, we're getting brand-new devices from our lease, so this is, you know, I was, I think this is probably most analogous to a new car, that you put mileage on. You know, it becomes relatively obsolete in this case, and then it's looking at a longer future, where we have our one-to-one initiative, and this is something that we can kind of plan for. Where theoretically, the prices will keep going down anyway, hopefully, in three years. And, but it gives us the ability to plan ahead and ensure that we have very quality devices for our students and for our teachers. And does this also come with the service contract, or is that?
It comes with the three-year warranty and it has the, what it does not come is the next item on your agenda, which are the cases. The cases are going to be costing us more money, because there's no salvage value among those sort of these companies. So those are recommended purchases, not by, it's not a cost.
So this is my question, and I understand constantly, but I also understand a significant amount of money was spent previous on technology work. And even though I know that the equipment is outdated, I think that is, is giving this kind of money even in a lease. And if you're going with the same company, what is, the real benefit of doing that is, I just don't, I'm just not even a whole 100% on this, unless it's, I, I see, you can understand why we need to do it. It's the money that's bothering me, and the fact that for three years, we're best facing that it could be more or higher. If we're dealing with the same company, that's on record too.
Well, we're not dealing with the same company for the actual purchase of the devices. It's the lease company. So you've got two different issues here. You've got actually where we're getting the computers from. And we had four under four, five, four companies that were bidding more to get those devices for us. So we drove the price down significantly from where we started to where we are now. And then the piece on top of that is, instead of paying for an outright, we'll lease it instead and save another $3,000 on that lease. So we wouldn't have to be paying a whole $240,000 right here this year, we'll break it out in three payments. At the end of that third year, the lease company will take the obsolete devices from our hands, and that will refresh it.
It's an option, we saw that it'd be a cross-savings of $3,000, if the board would like to purchase some outright. That's an option as well, we're just recommending a lease.
Are dating anyone by purchase from that right? No.
Do we give even a thousand dollars?
Right, because the lease is less of money.
Okay, so for clarity, I just have one thing. That mentioned that there were, that they, during the bidding, though that bidding was not for the lease, it was just bidding for having that purchase.
Yes, the devices themselves.
This is the only company, this is the only company that we got a price for, for the lease. We didn't allow those other companies that were more, but clearly, we didn't allow them to get to the next one on the lease.
Correct.
Correct.
Is anyone buying back the iPads, or getting anything for the?
Well, we're transferring them down. They're taken to, they'll take care of a lot. I thought there was a buyback for those, there was a buyback for the ones that we don't use.
Yeah, right now, we have to see about the classrooms first, make sure everybody has a set before we try to go and sell them out.
Are there any further questions or any more discussion? Okay, with that, Mr. Preto, we have a roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. I will entertain a, sorry, I will entertain a motion to. entertain a motion? Yes.
entertain a motion. On, on, I heard the law say the cases were not included in this. So that's going to be some additional money, which is the next, the next item that we'll be discussing.
Yes.
But I, does anybody even, if that means that we're going to be renting those cases?
We're going to buy those, we're going to buy those outright. You can't write the protective cases, they don't rent them. You have to purchase them. Okay, that's okay. Any further comments, discussion? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to approve a three-year device replacement cycle to continue with the district's one-to-one program. The lease will be for 1,000 Chromebooks devices, including a three-year warranty and Google management software. The lease will be for $239,580.51, with three equal payments of $79,860.17 for each year fiscal year seventeen, fiscal year eighteen, fiscal year nineteen. Mrs. Harold, first. Second, we have Mrs. Ford. Any further discussion, questions? With that, Mr. Preto, we have a roll call.
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Oden?
No.
Marks?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Huckabee?
No.
Perez?
Yes, and the motion has passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of technology device protective case. And we'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of protective cases for the new Chromebooks to help safeguard against potential damages for the amount of $39,870. Mrs. Harold? And Mrs. Ford, second. Are there any discussion questions?
Can I just mention, I, uh?
Yes, Mrs. Harold.
Are these universal cases, or cases that are specific, I'm assuming specific, because that's my part of the protected, I'll ask a question. Are these cases universal or customized to Chromebook? And they mean that, you know, beginning of new ones in three years, we do not transfer them?
It's customized to the model.
They are.
Because we can't use a universal, because there's different base models of everything, so it cannot fit properly on there, that's.
Is it, actually I have a question. Is it standard enough where we'll get a selection of models directly in the future if they didn't change their dimensions too much, or we could use them?
Yeah.
We can't guarantee that.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to know.
I know we don't predict the future.
If we keep with kind of the same vendor, make a model, they could slightly just vary a little bit, but the case will probably still work with them.
You know, this is a question I didn't ask, I meant to. What is the make and model of the device vendor leasing?
It's the Renault, Chromebooks, the N22.
And that does not have touchscreen, that's just keyboard?
Yes.
In addition, you were proactive on Android, you want to talk about that real quick, Mr. Preto?
Yeah, down the road, Chrome is supposed to release an Android-capable applications, and the model that I specked out is going to be able to support that down the road for any additional updates to it, Chrome.
All right, are there any other questions or discussion?
What is that, no, I couldn't hear.
You know, Mr. Lee, our three board members on the phone couldn't quite hear you. Did you, did you say that again?
Do you want to state model?
We're first, just talk about the Android thing.
Okay, um, down the road, Android and Chrome are supposed to be merging together to come up with some additional applications and everything. So a model that I had selected would be able to go and download the Android apps down through the future.
Thank you.
But that means exactly what? I mean, I understand what an Android is and downloading, but are just, are students able to use it on their phone?
No, no, not at your fault. It's just applications that developers use for new software that we've decided to use for like, any science, arts, and stuff like that. Gives us a more variety of apps to choose from. Instead of?
Yeah, okay.
Just helping us in the future, and it's likely as we move on.
So it's almost like a cross-platform, so it's, we're not just in the Google environment, it's very difficult to keep going in Android.
Which addresses the Apple apps as well, if there's more.
It's important to choose alternate apps to do this.
I have a question, actually. Have we looked into other, I mean, is this one company that makes the protective case? I know that we've looked at the iPad protective cases. I believe that we're looking at some different companies, and we got a good deal theoretically on the cases. It's, this, you know, I don't remember how many cases were, maybe it might help to know, what's the price per case that they're quoting us on?
Let's say they're about $30,000.
Okay, so I think that we paid $35 a case for the iPad case.
Yeah.
Am I understanding?
Originally, it's $4,000, so this is still moving in the market right now, so down the road, it could be cheaper.
Okay, what is the projected cost of repairing Chromebooks that get dropped for kids?
That's why, that's why we have the warranty.
Okay. So, and how long is the warranty?
Three years.
Three years, so.
Did you say three or two?
Three.
Okay, so what will the, what value will the cases give us, other than, we won't have to argue another one, because theoretically, damage will be lessened. What is the, how much money do we think we're going to save by having a protective case for a device that's under warranty?
Because you have better chance, because right now, if you have the warranty, you're limited to drops or to damage coverage. So, you know, if you don't have the case on there, you know, soon drops, you tag them, and then it's going to be a cost factor of that.
And if you remember, the iPads, we had all those breaks, and we decided not to get the cases. At first, we moved a different case, to try to save some money, and ended up costing us.
Okay.
So I'm trying to, I'm trying to, like, do this right the first time.
Wait, so, okay.
So are we carrying these around from class to class? So your part of the kids?
For through me.
So your part of the kids, along with all the rest of their stuff and their tracker, will also be carrying around all that?
Do we have one of the cases with us as a sample?
I keep running.
Would you mind, Harold?
A little thicker. No, I think they're a little thicker. It's a little thicker.
It's a little thicker, because when you add the case, it adds to the whole.
It's a little, but it's no more than a texture.
Okay, so this would not reduce, initially, this is not a huge amount of things kids will have to carry, this is an extra thing. I'm not trying to be a hater, I actually, I.
Wait, it's okay.
Okay, so this is what we're looking at for next, correct? I, I mean, whoops. Okay, so it's going to be mentioned there. Does anyone else want to see?
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Very nice. I feel a lot of research on it, so I have every confidence in you that I have. I have complete confidence in the extent at which you investigated this, and I thoroughly appreciate all you've put into this project. I certainly, and I know the rest of the board does as well. Are there any further questions or discussion? Okay, I'm going to roll call Mr. Preto.
Okay, Marks?
Yes.
Oden?
No.
Simmons?
Yes.
Huckabee?
No.
Ford?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, the motion has passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of transportation fund transfer. I'll call, entertain a motion to approve the transfer of $2 million from the Transportation Fund to the Education Fund, and $700,000 from the Transportation Fund to the Operations and Fitness Fund. Mrs. Ford, second, Mrs. Harold. Any questions? Can we roll call Mr. Preto?
Okay, Simmons?
Yes.
Oden?
No.
Harold?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, and the motion has passed. Next on the agenda, we have a second reading and approval of revised policies. I will call for a motion to approve, second reading and approval of revised policies, six, 130 program for gifted, seven, 150 agency and police interview, seven, 190 student behavior, seven, 300 suspension procedures, seven, 210 expulsion procedures, and seven, 305 student athletic concussion and head injury. Ford is first, Mrs. Harold is second. Are there any comments, questions or discussion? Mr. Preto, we have a roll call.
Okay, Harold?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Oden?
Yes.
Simmons? Marks?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, and the motion has passed. Next on the agenda, we have approval of resolution for ascertaining prevailing wage. Dr. Dessert, did you raise your seat, please?
Yeah, it's just an annual event for us that we bring for the state board, or for the state, and it's in regards to labor workers, mechanics employed in public works, projects throughout the district. There's a minimum dollar amount that we've looked at through the Cook County. Yes, this is an annual event for us that we bring for the state board, for the state. And it's in regards to labor workers, mechanics employed in public works, projects throughout the district. There's a minimum dollar amount that we've looked at through the Cook County office. And those dollar amounts are presented per trade. They're part of your attachments. And what we do is we recommend this at this time for approval from the Board of Education.
So I will entertain a motion to approve prevailing wage, wage rate resolution as presented. This is Harold. And this is Horvath. Ready to step? Yes, question, Mr. Simmons.
Dr. Duster or Fran, do you highlight any implications this body faces if we not accept the prevailing wage?
Basically, as far as we under, as far as I understand, is that it is something that the state of Illinois requires. We can, the board voted no. We would have to let the state board know as well. If we had worked that, that would be done. And we did not pay that, there may be ramifications from the state that we would have to address. I do not know where those are or what those are at this time. Thank you. You're welcome.
Any further questions or comments? Mrs. Breeno, can we roll call?
Okay, Ford?
Yes.
Odom?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Marks?
No.
Simmons?
No.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Crayton?
Yes, and the motion has passed. At this time, we will be entering to executive session to discuss matters relating to personnel. Five ILCS 120 slash two, one negotiations. Five ILCS 120 slash two, two. I will entertain a motion to go to executive sessions. This is Harold.
Second.
Second, this is Horvath. Should we roll call Mrs. Breeno?
Odom?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Huckabee?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Marks?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Crayton?
We'll be returning in about two hours.
There will be a personnel report after the action we take.